Here.
Here. Here.
I don't think Wanda has her mic on.
You're right, I didn't. Luz.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
Neil. I don't think she's here.
She's not coming.
No, yeah, I didn't think so. I'm missing somebody. Chizzle. Okay, alright.
Okay, is there anybody who wishes to speak to the council for anything that is not on the agenda? Seeing none. I do want to just make a comment. Listening to the news feeds, polarization is present these days at a national, state, and local level. As I reflected upon last council meeting, I wanted to remind us that at times when discussions escalate, when we have questions or issues that are unclear, rather than jumping to a quick, on-the-spot move to action, that we slow the process down, let's try to keep communication open and full, but respectful in order to air our differences and opinions. Through communication, discussion, and following the established council committee system, we can ensure clarity and transparency for the citizens we serve. Thanks for the consideration and for all the hard work you do. Thank you. Consent agenda.
Minutes of the April 5th council meeting. Claims. Item C, C-3 Commercial Design Review for 302 Washington Street Mineraline Beverage Works. Item D, Renewal Class C Liquor License for Elks, including outdoor service area and Sunday sales privileges. Item E, Request to Use Two Parking Spots West of Oniota Co-op, April 30th and May 15th, from 10:00 to 1:00. Item F, Special Event Application Decor Pride Festival, October 9th, from 12:00 to 5:30, Lower Co-op Parking Lot. Item G, Request to Close Washington Street from Water to Main, Thursday, May 20th, 7:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. for the annual school patriotic concert. And item H, Special Event Application Pulpit to Pulpit, July 3rd, 8:00 through 10:00 a.m.
Okay.
Luz would move to approve the consent agenda.
Hadley would second.
Moved by Luz, seconded by Hadley, discussion. Hearing no discussion. Roll call.
Luz.
Aye.
Hadley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zittergroom.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Chizzle.
Aye.
Okay. I believe, let's see, have you taken off the next one? You want to make any comment on that?
Sure. Item five, approval of a revised site plan for 308 Sumner Avenue, Wenatchee County Ag, has been taken off the agenda. They have decided to go back to the site plan that you approved at the last meeting. So, they decided not to change what they were thinking of changing. So I don't think they have to do anything else. I think there's just a few other punchless items that Jeremy wanted, but you've already approved the site plan and so they'll move forward with that one.
Okay. Okay, consider the purchase of travel vehicle.
Okay. Alright, so we have, you know, we spoke about this at the last council meeting, or actually I think it was the council meeting before that. And what I have managed to get from Car Auto is they feel our best option is to purchase a new Explorer. They also gave me a price on an Escape, but that particular vehicle's, I think, just too small for our needs. Chad and I looked at one of those and we just felt it wasn't going to work if you're taking any number of people with luggage for a few days. So, I think our best bet is to go with this Explorer in a hybrid. It will have to be ordered. And the cost is $27,868 and includes the trade-ins of the 2014 Explorer, which has almost 106,000 miles on it and it is in serious need of repair. It's in bad, bad shape. And we chose not to fix that because it's just not worth putting the money in. And then another 2015 Explorer, which has 111,000 miles, and that one is also in poor condition. So, you approved 25. This is a little more costly. So, we're bringing it back to you for consideration.
Council's thoughts?
I really appreciate the ability to buy locally at a reasonable price and the hybrid that we had hoped for to increase the lower the carbon footprint of our in-house fleet. So I would be supportive of the purchase.
Is that a motion?
Perhaps we could discuss just a couple minutes first. Yeah, Randy?
Well, I was just going to say, I would make the motion to proceed with this purchase and anything over 25,000 come from the sustainability funds generated by the franchise fees.
I will second it.
Motion made by Chizzle, seconded by Hadley.
Oh, does losing two from the fleet and only replacing it with one, does that hamstring us in any way, shape, or form, Wanda, as far as what, how much use were the other two getting?
You know, they, those travel cars do get a lot of use. I don't know that it's going to hamstring us too much because the one vehicle, you really can't even take it out of town. So, it's really, it's not a real usable vehicle at all. And so we're just trading in another one for this one. So I don't, I don't think it's going to be that big of a problem for us. And if we run into problems and we have to have more people going on a certain date, then, you know, we'll just have to pay mileage for people to use their personal vehicles. But, I think this is our best option.
How much are we getting trade-in for the higher mileage vehicle? I'm wondering if we should just keep that and then just maybe pay the difference?
I don't know. I don't know that. He just said it was with the trade-in. So I didn't ask how much I was getting for each individual vehicle.
Dave, you've worked with all those cars. Do you have any comments?
My recommendation would be trading both in. When we gave the one to the city, the newer one with the lower mileage, I told Chad, "Don't put that in the travel car fleet. Get rid of it at the first chance you get."
Yep.
They tried to repair it, they put money into it, and that car's not good. The one that's got high mileage, that's at the end of life too. My recommendation is to get rid of both of them.
I have a question. And again, I say this as someone new to the city's governance, but it seems to me that historically it made sense to use retired police vehicles as fleet vehicles because we already own them. And obviously the ones that we own are no longer suitable to the task insofar as, you know, staff understands it. And that's fine. I'm curious though, has anyone, is there, is there a reason that we're not simply just paying mileage for people's personal automobiles? It seems, you know, in many parallel-sized organizations with similar budgets, it's not typical to have a fleet for travel that maybe happens mostly on weekends. And I'm curious if we could save the city money by just considering not having a fleet vehicle. That's an outsider's question, maybe it's, there's an obvious answer to it, but maybe that's an important perspective to at least consider.
You know, for many, 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 many years, we didn't have any city travel cars. And it was costing a lot for mileage. And so it was finally decided to start using, you know, some of these old cars rather than trade them in because we already had them, and that has worked very well. There was one other car, oh, probably 20 years ago, Tom Courtney was still the chief. So it's been a while that we bought it, it was a Crown Vic. And we, that was the first car that we actually bought. And they're still using that one at the airport. But that's the first travel car that we actually bought that wasn't a, wasn't a fleet vehicle. I mean, I think that it has been a cost savings over the years, but like I said, we have never, this is the first car for many years, probably 20 or so, that we have actually had to buy. So I guess-
Yeah, I mean, and that's, it's probably hard to know without some pretty detailed forensic accounting exactly what it's cost us to have a fleet. There's so many costs that, you know, don't show up in the sticker price from the dealership. Everything from storage to maintenance to insurance, the staff time keeping track of it and keeping track of all those things. And then even just the staff time going to get the car if it's parked somewhere else. Or, you know, that there's, there's just all these extraneous costs. And I'm curious if, if we've done, I just want to make sure that if we're spending, you know, $30,000 in assets and money of the taxpayers, I want to make sure that this is the right way of doing it. If it's not, I mean, obviously it seems expensive to write a couple hundred dollars in mileage checks every month, but it's expensive to own a new vehicle also.
Yeah. Well, first of all, I think it's going to, as people start traveling again this last year, you know, people weren't going anywhere. But as people start traveling again, it's going to be more than a couple hundred dollars a month. And it wouldn't surprise me if you get upward of $600, $700 a month, maybe more. So, it's, and that's just in mileage. So, like I said, it's really hard to tell because it depends on those training needs. But, you know, the city does have, everyone has to have so much, so many hours of training that's job-specific. They have to have so many hours of HR training if you're in a department head position or a position that's supervisory and above. And so, you know, there's times that, I mean, there's, those cars are used a lot.
There's been times when there's three vehicles out in that fleet and they're all gone. And there's still people looking to go to schools.
Yep.
And the reason we kept the squad cars and started the fleet with that is because we weren't getting any money for them when we were done with them. The trade-in value was nothing. We were selling them to taxi cab companies out of New York and we weren't getting anything for the money for them. So that's when we started putting them aside for travel cars. And like I said, at times there's three of them out there and you still need them.
That's a good point, Dave, thank you.
Well, I guess that's kind of my point. If we're gonna, if we're not going to get anything, and that's why I'd like to know the trade-in amounts that we're going to get for these because for that high mileage one, if we're not going to get more than a grand or two for it, I think we should just keep it. So, I guess I'd prefer to know what we're going to get on those trade-ins for each vehicle before we decide on.
Well, I, yeah, and I can check on that, but like Dave said, the one, I mean, it can't even-
Yeah, one we don't let leave town and the other one with high mileage I believe is at the end of life. I think if we keep it around, you're going to start getting nickel and dime and that thing's going to be adding up before too long.
According to the Dropbox information, it says that the 44,145 is based with options. So, the next listing in the Dropbox talks about a police interceptor, I think is what it's listed. My question is if we're ordering this directly, are we ordering interceptor options that aren't necessary for the vehicle we want for a travel car? And so it would seem, Andy, that if we're paying 27 for something that's listed at 44, you can see there's some 16,000 there of difference. So it seems like we're getting more than $1,000 apiece for them.
I wasn't saying a piece, I'm saying if one's 15 and one's 1,000, keep the one that's 1,000. But I have no idea what these are worth.
I'm saying that 16,000 split between two vehicles to be more than 1,000 each.
So you can, Andy, if you open up Dropbox and actually look at that, look at the line item, you can see the overall cost, just like Steve says. And then in handwriting is the out-of-pocket. And if you divide it by two, then that is your, your value of your trade-in.
Are they both worth the exact same amount?
No, we don't know the exact amount, Andy. We're saying that if you just divided by two, it would average out to be more than $2,000 each even. Now that's taking the dealer price quote, which is of course, I'm going to say inflated for not wanting to upset any car dealers, but my question was standard equipment. Do we need the 2021 police interceptor utility standard equipment? Or are we going to order something that's more travel car?
Okay, so I can, what I can tell you is this is a basic automobile. There's no bells and whistles on the vehicle. In fact, the back seats, I've been told, is basically your police car. So they're more of a vinyl seat and backseat. And he, I was told that not going to be very comfortable for traveling too far. So it's not a high-end vehicle that we're ordering here. It's a pretty basic model.
Excuse me, could you remember to put your mute on if you're online? Thank you.
Yeah, it looked like a bare, bare unit in terms of cloth seats, et cetera. I just was wondering if there are things of a police interceptor that, quote, "aren't necessary for the vehicle we want."
I don't know, the only thing that's on it that you might wonder if it's needed or not needed is there is a backup camera, which I would argue is really needed for safety reasons.
Those are pretty standard, yeah.
They're pretty standard anymore. So I don't think there's anything on it that's not standard today. To my knowledge.
So like the headlamps that are police interceptor housing with LED, you know, stuff like, I see things and I just wonder if it's as basic as what you're saying. I hope we're not getting more than what we need because it's called a police interceptor. You know what I mean?
You know, I can, I can find out that information, but the way I was talked to, the way Kelly talked to me, that this is about as, as basic a vehicle as we can get.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council?
Just that the sustainability plan in item E4 does, the action item is to to encourage investments in energy efficiency by departments, electrical heating and transportation fuels. So, this would fall right into that. So, I would also support the use of sustainability funds based on the fact that it's in the plan itself as well.
I have a question about that. I mean, last meeting we had a long discussion and decided that we think that in the normal order of things, it might be good for requests for sustainability funds to come to us from the Sustainability Commission or at least give them a chance to weigh in. I think that we're bypassing that in this particular case. Is that, I mean, I just want to make sure that we're all on board with not running this by the Sustainability Commission.
I have no problem running it by the Sustainability Commission, but I think we should reference the fact that it's actually in the plan.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it meets the criteria and I'm not saying that, you know, I just think that since it doesn't seem like there's an emergency or a really pressing need to do this, I wonder if maybe the timing is, let's, you know, wait, wait two weeks and give them a chance to say this is, this is a good idea or not. Partially saying this because I know Emily would certainly be saying it if she were here. But I also, you know, we spent a lot of time coming up with the normal process last week that we voted on and I want to make sure we're, you know, not just bypassing it at the first available opportunity. I prefer to wait for the second or third.
Okay.
I think it would be part of the communication we talked about doing between our organizations. And it is part of the process to see that sustainability wants to use part of the money allocated for the sustainability plan by taking things there before it goes to city council. So I would be, I don't see it's a problem to wait for another meeting to actually approve it or approve it contingent upon sustainability, seeing that it is part of the plans.
I think that'd be the better way to do it.
Well, you have a motion and a second on the floor.
If it's already in the sustainability plan though, we can go ahead and do it.
No one's questioning whether we can do it, I'm just wondering if we should without talking to Sustainability Commission. Now, yep.
Okay, so, just, just so everybody knows, and that's fine, we can do that. I, like you said, I don't think there's any urgency necessarily with this issue. But sustainability meets this Wednesday. So it's too late to get it on that agenda. So it's going to be another month from now, just so everyone is aware of that.
Yeah, I think we should just move forward with this decision tonight, I really do.
Yeah, if it's, if it's a whole month, then maybe, maybe instead we can just-
And I did speak to councilperson Neil on the phone prior to the meeting and she suggested that since it's actually documented in the plan as an action item, it's not a subjective item where we're, where we're wondering whether or not the Sustainability Commission feels like this is something that's sustainable, you know, that fits within their metric. Since we actually have accepted the metric as a council, that we should just move.
Great, and it sounds like everyone's on the same page here. And then my last thing is just circling back to Steve Luz's comments on the difference between the police model of the Explorer and the civilian model. You know, I hadn't noticed that in the purchase agreement thing that came from the dealership. But just some basic looking around on the internet just now makes it seem like there are some pretty significant differences between a civilian version of this and a police version, including plating on the floor that is intended to protect. So I'm just curious, what possible justification is there for ordering a police version of the Explorer when this is pretty clearly more civilian oriented?
If you look on the back of our squad cars, it says "police interceptor", they're made for police departments. They've got heavy-duty suspension in them, they're made for running all the time. That's what we've been told. I've never sat down, I hope I'm not ruining anybody's sales pitch, but we're told that they're not, they're not your average Explorer. But you've got your basic Explorer, then you've got a police interceptor. And they say "police interceptor" on them.
And I guess I'm still comfortable moving ahead, you know, at staff discretion on this, but if there are potential cost savings in switching to the civilian model and especially if what we're signing up for isn't necessarily what we need, I'd at least, I'd at least appreciate it, Wanda, if we could double-check with the car dealer that they didn't mistakenly quote us for an additional police Explorer for our fleet when this is really mostly for, you know, road driving and-
Aesthetically, you won't see a difference if you park them next to each other, but I think they are built in a little bit more heavy.
Yeah. Okay, so, I will ask that.
I appreciate it, yeah.
But I assure you, they know it's going to be used for a travel car. We discussed that extensively.
And will it be black?
I don't know, what does it say?
Because if it is, as, we could do the reverse. If we buy the police interceptor model and as electric vehicles become more range, less range-dependent, we could migrate the police interceptor vehicle to the police department and purchase an electric vehicle at that point. But this way we have a police interceptor hybrid that we could transition into a, into a police car if the need arises and electric vehicles become more, become more standard for travel.
My concern is traveling with a bunch of steel on the floor that you may not need. And they're the weight and then the mileage of that.
Oh, I will, I will ask that.
Thank you, Wanda.
Just looking at the price of this, that retail price that's on there for $40,845 that's at the top of that sheet, that's a, that's a pretty basic model.
Right.
So I, I have to believe that there is not anything in this vehicle that he didn't, because it took him a long time to put this together. And he made a comment on that when, in the email to me. So, I, I will find that out, Steve.
Thank you much.
What I find out, and if I, and if I have concerns, I can, I'll certainly hold up.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Chizzle.
Aye.
Hadley.
Aye.
Luz.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zittergroom.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider Ordinance 1272, creating Chapter 15.12 Building Codes, Second Reading. Has there been any correspondence on this?
No.
I had a lengthy phone conversation with Mr. Falk, who is a concrete contractor. While we didn't agree on everything, we saw merits in both of our, both of our discussions, but he, he was concerned about timing because concrete is a more time-sensitive item. But I assured him that we were really working to limit any hindrance of construction.
Yeah, I had the same conversation as well.
As did I.
And if you bring these conversations before, you know, before our building inspector, he'll say that literally all you need to do if you want him there at 6:00 a.m. the next morning when you're, you know, getting forms ready to fill, you just need to call him the day before. So, the timing won't be a problem. I think it seems like there might be a learning curve as contractors learn, you know, that they just have to be thinking a little bit more ahead than they're used to in some cases.
Luz would move the second reading for approval.
Motion by Luz.
Second.
Second by Chizzle. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Luz.
Aye.
Chizzle.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Hadley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zittergroom.
Aye.
Motion carrying.
Do we want to wait for the third or shall we move to waive and adopt? My sense is to move to waive and adopt.
Any other sense?
I mean, I guess given that we have continued to receive comment after both the first and the second reading, I don't think it hurts to get more comment unless there's a sense from the building department that it would be really great to just be done with this and start enforcement. You're agreeing that that's the sense of the building department? Do, okay, alright, alright.
Well, we have a sense, we don't have a motion here.
Yeah, do you want to make that motion, Steve?
I didn't know what was the answer to your question, Steve.
Oh yeah, sorry about that. We got a big nod that yes, he wanted to just get this over with and waive and adopt, so.
I would move to waive and adopt. Waive the third reading and adopt the motion for the building code to be established.
Have a motion by Luz to waive and adopt.
Second.
Second by Hadley. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Luz.
Aye.
Hadley.
Aye.
Zittergroom.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Carlson.
No.
Chizzle.
Aye.
Motion passed? No, I don't think so. I'm going to refer to John, please.
That's right.
Takes three-fourths of the entire council. So since Councilman Neil isn't here and we had a no vote, that would fail for waiving the third reading.
That's right.
Okay. Did everybody hear that okay?
Yes.
Okay. In that, then we will put it on the agenda for the next meeting for the third reading. Consider request to Board of Supervisors to vacate Ice Cave Road to Corey Hill and convey any right- and convey any rights in the right of way to the City of Decorah. Have background on that?
Jeremy, are you on? You want to talk about that?
Yes. So I think, I'll, I'll give my version. I know John has spoken with County Attorney Vandermotten as well, but based on some conversations we've had with county staff, we understand the county does not, not have any plans to repair the road and the subsidence that has occurred several years ago. Of course, it's been closed for several years. And there's a desire by the Board of Supervisors to remove this from their plate, I guess, so to speak. And so they were looking for some official direction from, or input from council. And what I, I think, and John, you can speak to this, I believe that, that something will be happening regardless. But basically, there's two options. Be to allow them to vacate, and since the city is the underlying property owner, the road will become ours. Or we can choose to annex that area into the city and which would ultimately end up in the same result. So, John, I don't know if you have anything else to add that I missed?
No, that's an accurate summary of what I understand, too. The county Board of Supervisors is inclined to vacate this. They have not taken any official action, and they were looking for some direction from the city council as to what you folks would prefer to do. And in talking with Jeremy, I said, well, the only way we can get an official recommendation from the council is to have them vote on it, so we know for sure what your opinion is of that. And I don't know if you want to discuss the merits or drawbacks of annexation, but one way or another, the county wants this off their plate. And I guess the only question, other question I would have is, is the city interested in seeing this as a public right of way for vehicles?
So the county wants to get rid of the financial and legal liability of this. And the work done on it to repair it, from what I've understood talking with Jeremy, is not guaranteed or warranted or anything because of the washouts in that area. My question then is, why do we want to take on the financial and legal liabilities of this portion?
Well.
I would say my, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I, I was going to say, if they vacated, it's no longer a road. As far as our liability for it, you, I suppose you could see the situation where the, the county vacates it. They typically convey it then to the underlying property owner, but the, the way counties have roads versus cities, they have an easement right and not fee title, where we in the city, we typically own the ground under the road, the right of way. And I, there could be a question, if they wanted to vacate it and we didn't want them to, what would happen? I, I can't give you a great answer on that because I've never seen somebody turn down getting the land. But I suppose you could get to a situation where they vacate the, or they vacate it as a road because they're not going to use it. Perhaps there's a question of whether they still have a right of way there, but then they close it down to foot traffic. And then, you know, you have a question of, well, how does a pedestrian, a hiker, get to Ice Cave or, or anything like that?
John, may I ask who's the landowner underneath the city parks north of this road that are not owned by the city?
Well, the deeds, my understanding, if you look at Beacon, it says to the Decorah Parks Commission. That's a whole nother issue because I don't know that a park commission can own it. So I would say by default, it is actually owned by the city. Not, and it's not in court, it's not in the corporate city limits, and there's no problem with the city owning land outside of the corporate city limits as Fox and Coon Club is a great example of that. So to answer your question, Steve, the, the city owns that land at Ice Cave and Van Peenin.
But not by deed is what I thought you said.
It, it is by, bottom line is, it is by deed. The deed says the grantee, though, and I'm going by Beacon, I haven't seen the actual deeds themselves.
Okay.
Say to the Decorah Parks Commission. Jeremy might be able to confirm that or correct me on that. And I, I don't know the history, why that was, that could have, and maybe Andy knows. Maybe that was because the grantors wanted to ensure that they were used for park purposes.
Yeah. Makes sense.
Yeah, John, it's actually mixed, I think, between the City of Decorah and the Park Board Commission in terms of what's listed on Beacon. I think the difference here, and maybe Steve, this is related to your question, is that Ice Cave Road, the county with easement, right of way easement, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, John, for, because it is a county road. Whereas in the park, it's, it, they don't have an easement in there, and we're just the property owner.
Correct.
I guess in, in my limited understanding of the pros and cons of accepting vacation versus annexation, that I would support the potential, the potential vacation by the county and acceptance by the city, especially if the county were to help us to somehow delineate the closure of the road with either Jersey barriers or something like that, indicating that it is not a vehicle for traffic, vehicular traffic corridor anymore.
And I would think that they would have maybe a little bit of responsibility or, or an interest in doing that on the east end at Corey Hill Road. I'm not so sure on the west end because if they vacate it, that whole stretch is not theirs anymore. So where a, a Jersey barrier on the west end is kind of in, completely removed from any land they own. I'm just thinking through that, but the east end would, would make, certainly make sense. Not to speak for Lee Burkey, though, but.
Sure.
So is there any reason to annex the city parks north and have all of the ground? So who, who does the police jurisdiction of those city parks that are in the county? That's what I'm trying to get at. I'm wondering if it makes sense to go ahead and annex those city parks into the city so that we are a united entity all the way to the north of our park, up to the top of the park?
Police departments have, the police department has a jurisdiction in the, in the city parks that are in the county. We police them and we patrol them.
Thank you, Dave.
And Jeremy, can you speak to the, the potential issues with annexation?
Yeah, you know, I think one, I don't know if I'd call it a concern, but consideration would be Corey Hill Road. And we'd have to confirm how accurate Beacon is, but if we do annex in all of that property, there is some potential that we would have some obligation to Corey Hill Road because some of that would be within city limits if we were to annex. Again, we would need to confirm the Beacon boundaries, which would require some survey. Actually, probably a fair amount of survey work because the parts, parcels over there are pretty interesting. But that is one consideration is that Corey Hill farther up towards Van Peenin could potentially become more of our responsibility.
So that was why, that was why I would support vacation versus annexation.
It seems like there's a lot of entangled issues at, at work in this, you know, consideration. You know, to Randy's point, I'm wary of just sitting here and accepting, you know, sort of things from the county every time the, the financial and maybe liability costs, you know, sort of outstrip their willingness to continue to cover them. That said, I, I think there's just a, a great deal of benefit for the city in, in controlling that particular stretch of, of, of road in particular. It's, you know, it provides access to some of our greatest natural wonders and, and it's, you know, it's right along the river. So I, I think it's extraordinarily valuable, and I'd, I'd like to see it fall under city control. But, you know, I, I also, like, like I said, I, there's a reason the county wants out of it, and I don't, I don't want to, to sort of, I want to be wary as, as we, as we, you know, consider what, what kinds of costs we'd be incurring.
No, you could send it to the property committee for more study.
And Steve, to be clear, I, to my knowledge, the Board of Supervisors has not spoke on this. But if the city does not, there was some talk at one point about the city annexing not just the Ice Cave Road, but Ice Cave and, and Van Peenin maybe. Then if we did that, the road would become ours, or the city's automatically. If we don't move forward, the city doesn't move forward with the annexation, the indication I get or the understanding is, the county will, will vacate it anyway. So if we annexed it and we wanted it as a public road, then the county would just hold off and not do the vacation because they don't need it, need to do it because it, it would get off their plate anyway if the city annexed it. So if you decide not to annex it, not to annex it, there's a good chance the county would still move forward with vacating it and we get.
We get the land.
We get the land that has a broken road on it, but is not, but is not a designated public right of way for vehicles.
But is part of the reason they want to vacate is that they can only embargo or close a road for a limited time, whereas the city can close it permanently?
We would have to go through the same process to remove it from the public street system. If, if we annexed in Ice Cave Road and it had not been vacated by the county, we would be put into the same position of the county. And, but going back, Steve, so is there a time limit for how long they can embargo that road? I don't know that there is any time, time limit, but I think the county is probably thinking, well, we just got to make a decision. If we're not going to use this as a public road, we need to vacate it unless the city wants to take this land into the corporate limits. And if they want the road, you know, so be it. We'll leave it as is. And the city can deal with it.
So John, can I add one more? Sorry, can I add one comment real quick? I think just for clarification, too, if we elect to support the vacation, we could always annex it in later, right? We don't have to make that decision now.
That's right. And you could conceivably also later, if you changed your mind, dedicate it as a, as a public right of way because i- in this case, you own it already, so that would be a fairly straightforward process. So the, the county vacating it doesn't end the city's options if it went forward with annexation. If it gets vacated and the city does not annex it, well, city owns the land, but it's just not a public road, and you can't force the county to turn it into a public road again.
I would speak to accepting a vacated area, but also speak to us not planning to keep it as a thoroughfare to close it at Ice Cave. With, some plans have been talked about developing a parking area close to there so that folks could get there easier and take some of the strain off the first parking area right down from Dunning.
And we do have precedence of something like this in Doug Road, which was a road, which has now become a very popular recreational connector between the heart of Decorah and the campground. And it's a very highly used area. And this winter, Ice Cave Road was used quite considerably, I would guess, by, by skiing and hikers and dog walkers and bikers and whatnot. And it does, it does lend itself to pedestrian friendly use. Also, not to make everything come back to the sustainability plan, but in the economic development section, item eight, develop Ice Cave Road into an area that aligns with tourism, recreation, and sustainability, is a twenty twenty-two collaborative effort of the Historic Preservation Commission, Winnaishie County, the City of Decorah, local breweries as well, in the sustainability plan. So it's, it was thought of in advance, so I would support the vacation.
Andy, is there anything that you wanted to add, you know, speaking on behalf of parks, in terms of benefits of this that you see, the drawbacks? Obviously, this would change, change things for your department, maybe in some ways. I'm curious if you've thought of any of them.
Yeah, we, we've talked about it a little bit at the board level and then just staff also. So, you know, I think, I think you're playing it right. I mean, I think you're always cautious if somebody's giving you something because they don't want to pay for it anymore. So I hear that loud and clear, and, and we're always cautious. You know, over the years, just in my short term, a lot of stuff has been given to the parking rack and land and different things, and it's all great, but it does add to the workload for sure. And already being short-staffed, it just adds another thing. However, keeping access to Ice Cave, you know, Dunning Springs, that thoroughfare. Other than breweries, I don't know if you have a more popular spot in town right now. So it's, it's, I don't know that I'd want to go asking for that property if I'm you, but I, I wouldn't be afraid of it either, just because of the benefits that, you know, it could give long-term. And then, kind of like John said, you know, we don't know what's going to happen in the future. If twenty years from now, you want to open that road back up or, or whatever traffic studies say you need to find another route, it is under your control, and you're not trying to make two different government bodies come back together and make that plan. It's, it's your call, not, not trying to partner with somebody. So. So, yeah, definitely a little bit cautious, but I mean, there was times last spring, there was a hundred cars parked there, Long Dunning Springs, using that area. So it, it is nice. And it, it is going to cost money. I mean, when it was a road, we were over there with end loaders picking rocks and mudslides off just to try and keep it open. It's, it's not going to be a just walk away deal. I mean, at some point, I'll be back to the council trying to get money to, you know, for whatever, if it's amenities there, if it's to fix asphalt or keep it safe or whatever, it's, it's gonna, there's going to be cost, no doubt. So you just have to be willing to take that on. So that's my thought. And that's what we've talked about at the board level and stuff.
Well, since it's nothing pressing, I wouldn't have a problem with just tabling this for right now and come up with a plan.
Well, and we don't have to make a motion.
What's it going to cost to put in parking lots? You know, what's it going to cost to, Andy, come up with some kind of annual maintenance numbers for us? We have it, you know, are we going to leave it asphalt? Are we going to let it go back to gravel? You know, you know, different things like that. But before we move forward, I mean, I would be very comfortable with just saying, all right, let's just hold on here and come up with a plan, and then we go to the supervisors, because obviously they're going to want to get rid of it if they can.
Randy, how many years ago was it that we talked about this with the, with the Board of Supervisors? I think it was before most of the other people were on council, wasn't it?
It was three years ago, right when we, at least when we came on.
Wasn't there something where there was a bench cut, cut that wasn't made, and that's the reason it keeps sliding down? Jeremy, do you know anything about that? Have you talked to Lee about that at all, or what the possibility of that road staying intact?
Yeah, so I've seen the, the geotechnical report they had done. What they ultimately wanted to do is build up the road from the bottom, but because it enters a floodway, the Army Corps and DNR said that couldn't be done. And so I, I would have to look, I don't know if it was a specific shelf. I think there was a lot of fill when that road was built, which is probably causing some of the subsidence. But as we're seeing on Doug, Doug Road as well, some of these natural features around here just cause problems over time. And, and I know Randy alluded to it earlier, but the geotech firm suggested a fix. It was about two hundred thousand dollars for, I think, about a hundred-foot stretch or less. But there was a big asterisk there that it, it may be temporary. It was hard for them to say exactly how that soil, that subsoil was going to move and change over time just because of our geology. So I'd have to do a little more digging, but. So I'd have to do a little more digging, but I think it's telling that the, the county didn't want to invest in fixing it because of some of the, a lot of the uncertainty. I would also support Randy's notion to, to maybe wait until we have a plan as to what we're going to do until we, we agree upon accepting this. The other question I had for Andy was, is Ice Cave a state preserve? Or is it, is it owned by the county, or what? I always thought it was a state preserve.
Yes, it is a state preserve.
Okay, so, but who is in charge then of the maintenance of Ice Cave? Would the state still be in charge of the maintenance, or would we take that from them, or how would that work?
No, we have an agreement. We take care of it. Decorah Parking Rack.
And do they compensate us at all for that?
They do not.
It's a reverse unfunded mandate.
I, I appreciate your, your proposition, Randy, but I don't believe that this is an action item. I guess I just hope that the county hears that we support vacation, and if they vacate it, we just get the land. I, I don't think, and we can always put together a plan. But I think, or, or hear the fact that we are not interested in annexing. Can we agree on that? You know, if nothing else, maybe we can agree on that.
I would just move to table this request and move it to the property committee and come up with a plan for the area before we do any formalizing.
You have a motion to table, send it to the property committee?
I would say. Can I, can I just ask a quick question of John? What happens if we just take no action on this?
The county could still vacate it. I mean, they, they.
I guess I, I more meant, I, I, that would, that'd be more discussion. I meant in terms of whether or not a table is even necessary. Like, if we just don't take action tonight, this can just be brought up at some other point, right?
Right. If, e- either way, it could still happen. It was more a matter of the county was just, I think they were holding off on vacating to see if the city wanted to annex it and basically put this back into the, a public road. And if you don't take, take action, or you table it, the, the county still may move forward with vacating. It just might not be next month, but I would, it's going to be sooner rather than later, is my guess.
Thanks for the clarification.
So if we get, we have a motion, there's no second, the motion dies. Hearing no second, motion dies. Look forward to, for the discussion, getting some ideas and getting some plans, and then listening to see what the board, what the board decides.
Your sound's fading, mayor.
I sound what?
You were fading away.
Oh, God, I don't want to do that.
No, your voice, not, not your body, your voice.
Mel, thank you. I'll work on clearing it up. How about that?
Thank you.
Board and commission appointments, we're going to, we have two positions on the civil service. Wanted to have anything on that at all?
Just, just that we, one is, one would like to be off.
Yep.
And then the other one's appointment is up, and they do not wish to be reappointed.
Yeah, we've been looking for, for one of them that has been on and wishes to get off as well. So please take into consideration, if you're looking to support the city in that endeavor. Okay, city manager and department heads.
Okay, I'll start. I, I really don't have a lot to report at, at this time, other than I will be out of the office Tuesday through Friday this week. I've had some personal things come up that are taking me out tomorrow, and then Wednesday through Friday is the municipal finance officers' conference in Des Moines. So if you need me, you have my cell number, I'll have my computer along, so you can email me. But I think that's all I have this evening.
Okay. Is there any department heads that wish to speak on any piece? I think they usually put them in the Dropbox, if there is. Okay. Let's see, Kurt?
Nothing, mayor.
Steve, nothing?
I, I've got something. Is that?
Okay, no. He said nothing. I'll come next to you.
That's why, I thought you were, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. So, yeah, I just wanted to talk about follow-up to, to, two weeks ago's Betterment Committee meeting. I've been working with Jeremy Brill to try to develop some specific action items we can bring before council regarding using the right-of-way for outdoor dining, potentially a pedestrian plaza or an outdoor dining plaza downtown, talking about bike racks locations. So we're, we're going to, we, we were listening carefully two weeks ago, and, and, you know, we're talking, trying, trying to come up with a specific plan we can bring, hopefully sooner rather than later, because spring is, is springing soon. So we'll be, I'm talking with Juan about that, too, and, and we'll, we'll hopefully have something in two weeks.
I wonder if that, we could do that at a work session on the 26th of April, and have some discussion on that, so that, then we could bring something to that first meeting.
I'm totally amenable to that. That'd be great.
I think that would work good. Russ?
Another thing that I'd like to discuss at the work session on the 26th, then, I've been talking to Jeremy, who has been working with SMID on, on implementing one of the action items out of the Iowa Department of Transportation Visioning Plan that Mayor, you and I worked on, and lots of other people worked on several years ago. And one of the items in the visioning plan was greening the College Drive corridor. And Jeremy and the Street Department are working in conjunction with SMID to put together a landscape plan in conjunction with Earth Day for the greening of College Drive. And I'm, I'm excited about it. I think it'll beautify that corridor, and it'll help offset some stormwater issues that are, that are in the area. So I'll look forward to Jeremy and hopefully SMID having more information for us on the 26th.
Okay. Randy?
Nothing this evening, mayor.
Andy Carlson?
Nothing this evening, mayor.
Steve Lewis?
Yes, SMID did meet and talked and saw the pictures that Jeremy presented about greening College Drive. Also reporting, we're replacing five trees downtown that have either met their demise or are needing to be replaced. Also, the kiosks downtown are being rebuilt, refurbished, so that they look good for the upcoming season of guests coming to town. The next agenda item, one agenda item for the next meeting of SMID will be to talk about the downtown assessment report that has been sent out to all the different community groups, from chamber to development to jobs to downtown betterment, so that they can talk about them and come up with which aspects of that are ones that they think are important, that they would like to, I'm going to say, support or encourage being taken care of. So I would like to encourage the council as well to reread, if you haven't read, the downtown assessment report that's been sent out to everyone, and look at what you think are the items that really speak to what Decorah can do. I think one of the big ones was helping people find downtown off of the two highways. Some sort of signage and, and pinpointing people finding their way down to Water Street. So I'd encourage people to read that, and I would say, at some time, we should have a definite review of what the council's perspective is. Looking forward to the council hearing from these different community groups about what their ideas are, so that we can encourage and also support what they want to happen, and make things happen for the betterment of Decorah. Thank you, mayor.
Thanks. I worked with Andy Carlson a little bit, and Park and Rec, and the Library, and National Wildlife Federation, a mayor monarch pledge, and we've signed up for that. That goes for a year. Any of the activities that we have to do with the monarch butterflies and such can be put on that website. So we've worked with that. I appreciate that Andy has a net on. I did attend the SMID as well, which was, I, I've been going to some of those meetings, and I've enjoyed becoming more informed. I did a solar and wind land issues focus group. It was a class from Iowa State on public participation and planning. Those, those classes are always fun, very teachable moment for both the instructor and the students, along with going with P and Z and Board of Adjustment. If there's nothing further, I'll ask for a motion to, oh, I do have one more. I need to, one of the things we need, I need to get ahold of Bank of the West and figure out what they're going to do with pigeon droppings that are in front of that.
Okay, I spoke with a representative of Bank of the West today.
Good.
And he was, he was very clear that, that that's not really his responsibility, but he said that he would see who he could contact that could maybe help take care of it. He questioned me as to whether or not, is it just the Bank of the West building? Are there other buildings involved that, that have the same problem, or is it just Bank of the West? And I couldn't tell him that. It's just Bank of the West is the only building I hear about, and maybe they're just the only ones not cleaning it up.
It was suggested at SMID that the new sign on Bank of the West had nice places for birds to rest, and therefore drop things.
Okay, okay. Well, and I can call him back and tell him that, that, you know, that's kind of the prevailing, you know, difference that you think that it might be that. But then he kind of wondered, too, how, how are they supposed to go about cleaning it up? And you did it, Ross.
You do it with a snow shovel and a broom, and I've, I've done it several times in the last couple of months. It is not a city issue, and if they don't clean it up, I tried to contact Bank of the West in Omaha. I tried to contact Bank of the West in California, in Des Moines. I spoke to the property manager. Nobody is taking, nobody is taking action on it. It's very frustrating. And since we do have an enforcement officer, I feel that if it's not mitigated by the end of this month, that we look into civil penalties for, for litter.
Well, I, I did make it clear to him that we feel that it is their problem. And I said, you have had some nearby property owners and merchants that have cleaned it up for you, but that it is your problem, and that whether it's just with a shovel or a hose, you know, whatever, and I don't know where you disposed of it.
They had, they also had sparkle wash come in and power wash the, power wash the sidewalk. So it's an ongoing issue. It's not just cleaning. It's mitigating that sign in some way to take care of that roosting issue because of the heat and the light. There is a problem with those birds. There are, actually, somebody corrected me that they are not pigeons. They're some other type of bird. But whatever they are, there is a, a problem with them in other areas, but other people are, other merchants and Water Street businesses are actively cleaning, whereas they are not.
Right. Well, and I said that. I said if others had the problem, they're cleaning.
Right.
And I told him that, that from what I'm hearing, that it should be at least cleaned every other day.
Well, and the part sparkle, I think, is wash is a local business.
Well, I will, I will call him back and tell him what we kind of think maybe is why they have chosen that spot to really congregate. I don't know what they want to do about that, but I told him they should go up on top of that building and see what's up there that is maybe, it's the sign. Okay.
Okay, move to adjourn? Thank you.
Thank you all.
We have a committee meeting, a budget? We'll take five minutes and return. Thank you.
I just saw an issue with the protest.